I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Homewood School District 153 for March 10, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Biffey?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Here.
Mrs. Scully?
Here.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Ms. Staben, present.
We have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Board of Education of February 3, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yes, good evening, everybody. A reminder, a week from Wednesday is our next early release day. That's where staff work in the afternoon. That's Wednesday, March 19. Spring break begins Monday, March 31 and continues through that week, ending on April 4. And then, big date for all of our families, registration opens for next school year on April 14th. So about two weeks after we return from spring break.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have an overview of the FY '24 audit.
Yes, at this time, I would like to invite Jennifer Decker from our auditor, Whitely, to come up and present the findings of the FY '24 audit. If you could speak into the microphone, it is being recorded, and that way people at home can hear you.
Facing that way?
You can face whichever way you'd like. Face the board, how's that?
Instead of facing you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. Thanks for having me here. I just want to go quickly over the results of the FY '24 audit. The district is a modified cash basis of accounting, which is the vast majority of what the school districts are in Illinois. We issued an unmodified opinion on the audit for this year, which is a clean opinion, which means it complied with all the auditing standards for the FED. I was going to flip through the pages, but there's nothing to set it on. So I'm just going to go quickly through pages. Five through 16 are your entity-wide financial statements. These are the financial statements that include, the first two statements, pages five and six, include your government-wide financial statements, which are more of a kind of a corporation-type presentation of the financial statements. It has your capital assets on it. It has your long-term debt on it, whereas the fund financial statements don't report that information. Looking at the net position for the district on page six of the financial statements, the net position went up about $2.7 million, and the fund balance also increased for the district in its entirety, $1.2 million roughly, which is mainly due to the repayments of long-term debt and like the amortization to get rid of the long-term debt. The district's general fund balances consist of the ed fund, the O&amp;M, and the working cash, which was roughly $7 million at the year-end, on page nine, which was approximately 19% of the year's expenditures. It may be a little short, it may be a little small in relation, but that's because you're missing the second installment of the property tax from Cook County. So once that comes in, everything kind of equals out. On pages 11 through 51 is the notes to the financial statements, and these have the significant account accounting policies, how cash is handled, how property tax revenue, grant revenue, all that is handled, capital assets are handled. Page 18 has the listing of your cash and investments, information that's provided from the charter. And page 19 has the outstanding bonds for the district, the outstanding bonds, the outstanding liabilities. That's reported on the front pages of the statements. Pages 21 through 36, roughly, that is your retirement and your OPEB footnotes. That's the IMRF, the TRS, the THIS information, the stuff that the state owes, and that what you owe to the teachers and employees if they were to retire all at one time at that particular point in time. That's what that balance is. It's a hypothetical balance, we like to call it. Pages 38 through 46 is trend information regarding the OPEBs and the IMRFs and the THIS. So it's sort of like a 10-year period, how the district is contributing and whether or not the liability is going up or down or turning into an asset, because IMRF did have that a couple of years ago. Pages 47 through 63 is the combining and individual financial statements that highlights budget to actual. So looking at the ed fund, you'll notice that it was overbudgeted, and that is 100% due to the TRS on-behalf expenditures. It happens to almost every district in Illinois. The other funds, the spending was completely in, outlined in their budgets, it was on track. It was not over nor under. TRS or transportation and IMRF are maintaining adequate fund balances. And on pages 64 and 65, that's a 10-year history of your property tax information. That shows your collection rates and how your EAVs has changed and how the property tax rates have changed. Operationally, we, the district, has sufficient controls in place, and we do not have any suggestions for improvement as far as internal controls go. I'd like to thank Eric and his team. They did a great job in helping me out with all the information that needs to be compiled through these jobs and provided during the audit. So just wanted to say thank you regarding that, whoever Eric is. So, any questions?
Anyone have any questions about the audit?
I know I kind of went through that fast.
Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience have any questions on the audit? Could you please tell us your name?
Is that available?
I'm sorry, could you please tell us your name?
Randall Walters.
Thanks, Randall.
Is that available? I think it's available to the public. It is available to the public.
I believe it's on your, on the school district's website in the, under the business section, financial reports.
It becomes available after it's presented to the board. So it will be available on the website, yes.
It's also available through the Illinois State Board of Education, if you go there and look up the district. It's there.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Dr. Trimberger and in his office for all the paperwork that they supply, again, to Ms. Decker and her team.
Very good, thank you. The next item on the agenda is audience participation, and if anyone is in the audience who would like to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, we welcome you to come up. Please use the microphone, tell us your name and your address, and you are, by board policy, you're limited to three minutes for your comments.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gail Adams Rodriguez. I live 1335 Ridge Road. I don't think bullying was on the agenda. I didn't have time to pull it up, but just in case it wasn't, my daughter attends James Hart. She's in seventh grade. There have been several different situations where bullying has taken place. My daughter has been the perpetrator and on the receiving end. Before winter break, I went to the school, spoke with Ms. Ugo. Ms. Ugo instructed me to handle it outside of school, that they would not take care of it. So I asked Ms. Ugo to compose an email in which we could share parents' telephone numbers so we could try and resolve it outside of the school. I did that. We went on, went to break, I checked back in with the parents, hey, January 7th, has anybody heard anything, what's going on with the kids, in an effort just to keep this down. My kid, all of my kids have went through Homewood Schools, and I've never seen bullying be this prevalent. So needless to say, it still went on in different ways. There was girls and boys involved. My daughter sent out a text maybe right the week of Martin Luther King birthday, saying one of the kids would come up missing. The kids did, sent text messages back and forth. So at this point, I reached back out to the school, to the principal. I said, hey, whatever we are doing is not working, we need some extra help. I have a great relationship with Dr. McAllister, so I kind of chimed him in. Dr. McAllister did reach back out with me, we talked about it, it kept going. Nothing was being done at the school. One day, we're here at a basketball game, my daughter's on the dance team. I watched everything, I watched my surroundings, everything. So the girls on the dance team were just circulating out back and forth inside the gym. I saw one of the parents whose child was involved in this bullying situation, she was one of the parents that's saying, if they're going to fight, just let them fight. So when I watched her walk out with the rest of the girls, I said, hmm, I better get up and go see what's going on. So there's no guidance in the hallway. Ms. Ugo and Ms. Johnson are sitting up on the stage along with the gym teacher. So at this time, I'm like, this is crazy. We got all these teachers here. Our kids should be able to walk freely about, but this mom is just different. So I go out and I see her, and they're kind of walking out like this with their hands, you know, just so any, no one will bump them. I go up on the stage, I said, Ms. Ugo, Ms. Johnson, y'all sitting up here, but these, the girls are just wandering the hallways. It's not that much bathroom time in the world. Make them sit down. So they get up, they huff and puff, they go. Next day, my daughter gets an in-school suspension from the gym teacher, saying she cursed. When I say, when I'm in these hallways, that's all we hear is curse words. Maybe I need to read my handbook, but I didn't know you get an in-school suspension for a curse word. I think that should have been a conversation. So needless to say, I'm heated. I call, I yell, then I call back and I apologize. I said, you know what, I'm going to go forth with what you guys are doing, in an effort to make her understand it's not okay. Well, the bullying keeps going on. I'm talking to Ms. Johnson about it back and forth. The one, one young lady that she really was-
Sorry, I don't want to stop you, but your three minutes is up. If, if, just if you could maybe-
Just really, so basically, my daughter got suspended for a verbal altercation. I asked if I could see that video to see if it was physical. I never got it. I asked for another meeting, Dr. McAllister. She just, the principal just responded on last Friday. I've been sent all of this, but I'll keep you updated. But what's the protocol for an out-of-school suspension after bullying has been going on? The particular young lady, she got into it, created a whole James Hart ugly holes page. But my daughter got suspended.
Yeah, you and I have spoken before. I'll obviously follow up with Ms. Johnson and Ms. Ugo, and someone will get back to you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jamila Doyle Walters. I reside at 18808 Royal Road. I'm going to piggyback off you. Right now, we have a situation of bullying and racism going on at Willow. So today, I stand before you as a concerned parent and community member. My daughter, Jordan, raise your hand. On, that's my daughter, Jordan, on February 21, 2025, while enjoying her lunch with friends, one of her classmates randomly stated she looked like a monkey like Barack Obama. He also wished that segregation and slavery returned, and he would capture and torture Regardless, if these are the thoughts of this young man or his parents, I need for both parties to know that I will not tolerate this, and this will not be tolerated in this community. My daughter stated prior to this event that her neighborhood was safe and kind. Unfortunately, that is no longer the case. She now knows that bad people do exist. My husband and I sent our daughter to school whole, only for her to return broken, broken and left for repairs that only our love can mend. I do appreciate Principal Gordon, Ms. Woods, and Mr. McMenon's handling of the situation, because the kids gathered after lunch and decided to not tell lunch staff. They wanted to go to their teacher because they trusted him. The one-day suspension, I believe, was not enough. A removal of the child from the classroom should have been extended instead of asking me to do a room change for my child. Since the occurrence, more parents have stepped up and shared their interactions with me regarding the same young man, going as far back as kindergarten. Although the experiences are different and have escalated in nature, we all share the same concern. He is not safe for our public school system. His many verbal attacks and unruly behavior in and out of school constantly creates a negative environment with feelings of stress and frustration among our kids. My biggest question is, what is the school doing? Often, the public concerns are not taken serious until something bad happens. With the increase of school shootings, I encourage Homewood School District 153 to be proactive and not reactive. I do not want us to be on the news stating there were no red flags when there were many. So many times, a school and a community thinks that the school hands are tied, but if the school is actually following the guidelines under SB 100, there are steps that the school can take to protect our children and staff members. But is the school really following these procedures? Are they documenting properly? Submitting disciplinary actions to ISB? How bad do things need to be? I would like to believe incidents are being reported, however, according to the district, he has no red flags. This child had, has displayed disruptive and aggressive behavior since kindergarten-
Excuse me, Ms. Doyle.
Okay.
I want, I do want you to finish. I just want you to know that the three minutes is, okay?
Okay.
You're welcome.
This child has displayed disruptive and aggressive behavior since kindergarten, and he is now in second grade with no improvements. I'm aware that some of you may be acquaintances or friends with the offender, so please pass along the message. Wrong child, wrong mom. I will be tracking the behaviors and encounters of this child as he interacts with my daughter, reporting them as they occur, and I ask other parents to do the same, in and outside of school. Let's educate ourselves on our disciplinary policy in Illinois State Board of Education laws. Let's advocate and push for our change and transparency within our school district. I did have some more?
Thank you.
I'd like to take my three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is a great book. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Randall Walters, 18808 Royal Road. Just in unison with my wife, I feel that the situation that occurred should not have never occurred. And I understand that kids are going to be kids, sometimes hurtful things are said, but it's about what's being done after that kid says something. And I want to say that me and my wife feel that the punishment wasn't conducive to the action, because this kid really hurt my daughter. And for the school to present us removing my daughter out of the class versus the person that actually portrayed the action is real perplexing to us, because she did nothing wrong. Why should she have to leave a class that she loves her teacher, she loves her classmates? She's not a bad student, she's one of the best students in the class, but for little Johnny to make the statements that he made and still be able to be in that classroom, then you say, oh, well, we, why don't we put Jordan in another classroom? It's, it's, that's not right. You know, and me and Mr. McAllister had a conversation, and I don't understand how you've had more conversations with my wife than you've had with me. We had one conversation, and you've had numerous conversations with my wife. So that, I don't understand. I mean, as a human, as a dad, as a man, I would think that when you brought that to my attention and the way that you were about to go through with it, you would have informed me. I have no email whatsoever from you. I had one phone call with you, that's it, that's all. And I don't think that's right. I don't know what school district rules are according to that, but, I mean, I'm kind of in the, I'm kind of in the dark. My wife has everything, she has to relay that information to me. When I have a heat, an active email address, I have an active address, I have an active phone number. And I kind of feel like you were being a coward about the situation, because your response was, well, I think we can change this young man. Once a person shows you who they are, you have to believe them. And this isn't the first time that this has happened. And I understand that, yes, we want to treat our youth and try to teach them the right way about going about things, but it's obvious that what y'all doing ain't working, because he's still doing it. You know, so let's try to change something up. We can't keep, continue to go status quo, because it's not, it's not working. And with that, thank you for your time.
You're not doing it.
Going forward, I am requesting a response from the current and upcoming board members of our disciplinary policies and record-keeping of disciplinary actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's come to address the board on any items not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening. My name is Sheri Foster. I live 2715 Knollwood in Hazelcrest. Last meeting, I stated there was a need for reform within the Special Education Department within District 153, and how surprisingly it is to find out that the Illinois State Board of Education also agrees. Churchill, naming Churchill and Willow on their watch list. You all stated at the previous school board meeting that every child will learn and every child will be served, and in my opinion, with limitations. I feel as though the principles at both schools are spread very thin. Working with limited resources to ensure the needs of our children are met, but why should they have to? Why should my child's IEP be completed by someone who doesn't have the appropriate qualifications to complete an IEP? If a teacher is in an approved program to become a certified IEP, ISB 1, that would mean that she currently is not certified. So what qualified personnel is writing my child's legal and binding IEP? What are you all, the board, doing to fill the positions that are empty and some that are filled with unqualified personnel? You also spoke on a mentorship program in regards to teachers still within their curriculum. How many monthly minutes are set aside for this mentorship? Is this mentor readily available by the phone when questions in regards to IEP arise? For example, attention-seeking behavior is not a reason for a behavioral plan, it is a symptom of something much deeper, which a professional BIP should have discovered. My child's IEP has been out of compliance not once but twice, left unsigned during multiple meetings. Staff member names are missing off the sign-in sheets when the state of Illinois legally requires certain staff members to be present and to sign in. Again, this is the second time, not the first, but the second time, my child's IEP was incorrectly written, resulting in her being sent to the wrong special educational classroom, when in fact, her IEP stated she required a gen ed classroom with a one-to-one assistant. What is going on here? The principal, with her current knowledge, was able to assess the current situation and appropriately placed my daughter exactly where her initial IEP stated where she belonged. Thank you, Mrs. Peacock. Who, who is overseeing this? Who is in charge of my child making sure her IEP is in compliance? My child has been out of compliance all year, and she has been placed in the wrong environment and not her least restrictive environment. I should not have to take my concerns to the board to ensure due process, to have my child's IEP followed, and for her to receive her free and appropriate education. Due to the incompetence and lack of properly-completed functional behavioral assessment and BIP development, my child is being labeled as a child with a behavioral problem, and I will not stand for it. Parents have spoken about getting together with advocates to start demanding that our children are being provided their faith rights. Again, what are you, the board, doing to ensure that our children with IEPs are being treated appropriately and handled with care? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who has come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's Okay, then we will move on. Thank you for your comments, and we will look at everything that was brought up tonight. Do we have any responses to questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings?
We do not.
And do we have any board members who need to report on any committee meetings or other things that you have been at, that you would like to report on? Okay, superintendent's report.
Yes, just wanted to let everybody know that next week, starting on Monday, the 17th, IAR testing, which is the annual state testing, that will commence, and that will be throughout the duration of the week, 17th through the 21st. I mentioned registration opening on April 14th. We are also in the process right now of planning summer school, and our staff at the buildings and at the district level are assembling the names of individuals that we will be sending out invitations for. So you can be looking for that sometime in the next few weeks. The administrative staff continues to work on staffing for next year based on enrollment and our budget. And I also wanted to mention, over the weekend, we had three students who received gold medals in our Special Olympics program, and we are actually going to recognize them formally at the April meeting, but I did want to announce their names, just so everyone can hear that. At James Hart, we had Brian Block and Angel Corona Ramirez, and at Churchill, Jesse Jurza. So congratulations to those three people, and like I said, they will be here in April, where we can, where we can show you their faces and formally recognize them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have several consent agenda items tonight. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for April 2025. The second is to set a date for the new board organizational meeting.
Yes, the election is taking place next month for the school board, school boards everywhere, ours included. We have three vacancies and three individuals running for those seats. So after the, after the election takes place, Illinois law says that we have 40 days in which to reorganize, seat the new members, and then reorganize the board. And so we will be doing that immediately before the May 5th board meeting.
Very good. And we need to change the time for the regular meeting of May 5, 2025, because of the board organizational meeting? So that will happen immediately following the new board organizational meeting. We have a personnel report.
Yes, this is always a bit melancholy for me to announce the names that I'm about to read to you. Each year, typically in the spring, staff members put in for retirement, give us notice of retirement. And this year, you can see in your board agenda, and then again, the names that I'm about to read, several people have put in for retirement over the next several years. So I'm going to read each of the people. Many of them have been longtime 153 staff members, and we always hate to lose highly-qualified, respected people. It's also the nature of our profession that some people come and some people will eventually retire. So next school year, at the end of 2026, Kim Homrich from Willow will be retiring. The following school year, so two more years for these individuals, Fay Haugie, secretary at James Hart, Dr. Trimberger, our business manager seated in the back, and Karen Kirsten, a longtime assistant at James Hart. Three more school years, all of these individuals will be retiring in June of 2028. Margie Bowling, special ed teacher at Willow. Kendra Duncan, DLS teacher at Willow. Christine Fitzgerald, an assistant at Willow. Carrie Spain, assistant at Willow. Sarah Sturbinz, the media center assistant right here at James Hart. Melanie Welsh, assistant at Willow. And Vicky Wigenhauser, an assistant at Willow. And then four years down the road, in education, we're one of the few places that announces retirement four years in advance, up to four years in advance. So we have Laura Kozel, special ed teacher at Churchill, and Anne Snow, interventionist at Willow, who will be retiring in June of 2029. So again, many of those names, if you've been in our community, you recognize those teachers. They're all outstanding teachers and assistants. Sorry to see them leave, but of course, happy for their announcement. And that's it for personnel.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions from the board on any of the consent agenda items?
No.
Are there any questions from the audience on any consent agenda item? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. We have several action agenda items. The first is to accept the audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Any questions on the audit, from the board, from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education accept the FY '24 audit as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Motion carries. We have the second payment of February 2025 bills and the first payment of March 2025 bills. Any questions from the board?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorize the second payment of February 2025 bills and the first payment of March 2025 bills in an amount not to exceed $2,778,532.87.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have approval of a contract with School Exec Connect, and I will explain this. Next school year is Dr. McAllister's last year, and he will be retiring at the end of June of 2026. So one of the most important jobs that the board does is hire a superintendent. And so the board will be looking for a new superintendent. And we are, we interviewed three different groups, two consultants, to help us find the very best superintendent and the very best match for our district. And so we are asking for approval of a contract with School Exec Connect to help us conduct that search and bring us a highly qualified superintendent to work with the board moving forward. Any questions from the board on the contract? From the audience?
I do have a question. With this...
Thank you.
So my question would be, with this company that's contracted, will they also take the consideration from the community?
Absolutely. That is part of the, that is part of the process. There will be...
Focus groups?
Yeah, but that, a forum, there'll be a cer, there'll be a survey that everyone can fill out. There'll be a forum for community members. There'll be focus groups. So absolutely, yeah, yeah. That's a very important part of it. Thank you for the question. Any other questions? Yes, can you come on up? We, we record these meetings. So it's helpful for people who are going to watch it online. Thank you.
Good evening. I was just going to ask about the timeline.
Tell us your name, sorry.
Dory Elmore.
Thank you.
Parent of a Willow student.
Great, thanks.
Good evening. I'm just going to ask about the timeline for the search. Will...
Great question.
...that be publicized so we can have a heads up?
We're going, we are already beginning kind of the groundwork to set up some of the things that we'll need to have in place. We will be starting the search at the end of August. And we are hoping that at our December board meeting, we can announce our new superintendent. Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks for the question. Any other questions?
Once again, Randall Walters, 1-8808, real world. My question is about the busing. What are we doing about the consistency of the way our children are bused because...
Wait, I'm sorry, about what?
Our busing system. The bus, school bus.
Okay, we, um, these questions should be about the contract with School Exec Connect.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And questions that aren't on the agenda are at the beginning. But I'm going to welcome you to add, when we get through this, come on back up and ask the question, okay?
And I, I can certainly follow up with you as well.
Okay. Any other questions on the School Exec Connect contract? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the contract with Social Exec Connect not to exceed $19,500 plus expenses to accept applications, screen candidates, interview candidates, and present a slate of vetted candidates to the board to fill the July 1st, 2026 superintendent vacancy.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, just one name this month. Aneeshia Johnson, a food service worker.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on employment from the board, from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration at the Board of Education, approve the employment of Aneeshia Johnson effective February 24th, 2025, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, condition only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than March 15th, 2025, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do we have any discussion items tonight?
There are none.
Okay, Mr. Walters, if you wanted to ask your question now, I would welcome it.
Thank you, and I apologize for...
No, that's okay. That's okay.
But my concern is the busing situation that we have throughout the school district. As you know, my son, Randall Jr., he rides Churchill's sped bus. And there has been times where the bus didn't come before nine o'clock. And no information was given out. We go on 153 website, AM bus is late, nothing on there. So, and we have no feedback from nobody. Then they sent us a robocall at 9:15 saying, oh, that bus is going to be 10 minutes late, when my son is supposed to get picked up at 7:55. So what are we doing about the consistency of this? Because that affects me as a parent, because now I'm at home, I can't get to work. Now I have to call my boss and say, hey, I'm going to be late, my son's bus didn't come. I don't know what's going on. They haven't given me any feedback. And also, my daughter's bus, you know, there's been times where her bus has been late. Now, I understand that as adults, stuff happens, you know. But the consistency of stuff happening with this school district and this particular bus company is real, is, is, is scary. Because I don't know what to do. You know, I can't leave my child at home and say, okay, well, whenever the bus comes, just go out there and get on the bus, when we don't even know if the bus is going to come. You know, so what's being done to, to kind of get this thing in order, you know?
I'll talk to you to get specific details, because you should never, you know, the typical rule we have is if a bus is more than 15 minutes late, we will notify. So to hear that it was over an hour and you didn't get notified, something clearly happened that wasn't...
And I definitely made this clear to the school, the principals and everything, you know, so they...
But let me, let me see if I can get some details and talk to our transportation person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any written communication to the board?
There was. It would be taken under advisement.
Okay, thank you.
Can you speak back off of the bus situation, or is it closed at topic for now?
If you have something you would like to add briefly, the time to, let me just explain. I know many of you haven't been too... I know, and that's why I'm allowing you to, I'm, that's why I'm certainly allowing you to come up and speak. Come on. But I also want to explain that our, the way we do public discussion is we take those items upfront in that period of time that's meant for it. And we do ask for audience feedback for every single one of our agenda items. But I know this is important, but I do believe that we have a place that we allow for comment. But please go ahead.
Thank you. Sherri Foster, again, as you all know, I have a special student. So again, piggybacking off of the bus situation, it's, it's a little concerning. In the absence of the bus driver that is like our scheduled bus driver, when there are substitutes, they're asking students that are riding special education buses, and just like I mentioned before, with your home address, they're also late. There has been inappropriate occurrences where I had to go. My daughter would tell me, well, the bus driver put her hand here and said something, and so I had to go have a conversation. Again, I don't know if the company needs to be switched or what the issue is, but when our regularly scheduled bus driver is there, it's not an issue. But everyone gets sick, everyone deserves a vacation, whatever the case may be. I shouldn't be worried or weary about who's taking my child to school and how she's safely returning home.
I, I want to add, I want to just give you, and Mr. Walters, and I know Dr. McAllister's going to follow up, but when we have gone out to bid for a school bus contract, we get one bid. And there are, there is a huge shortage of school bus drivers that has stemmed from COVID. It started then, and it just, they just don't have enough drivers. Now, that doesn't mean that our, in our opinion, our kids come first. And their transporta, their safety from the minute they walk out your door till the minute they get home is our responsibility, even though we contract out our transportation services. So your comments are heard, but I also want you to understand that we are somewhat in the hands of a company that we have to hire to service, because we don't own our own buses, nor do we have the funds to purchase our own buses. Okay, so I just want to, and Dr. McAllister will be following up, okay? Thank you. It's not just us. It's districts in the south suburbs are getting one bid for, from school bus companies. I wish it, I wish it were different.
For what it's worth, too, I work at a school in Lombard, Illinois, totally different district. We have buses late every single day. We had two bids. Two bids versus one, buses are late, sometimes hours late every day. It's a statewide, probably more of a global issue than a local issue.
Yeah. Thank you. And heard, absolutely heard. Okay. We're going to move on to adjournment. Come on up.
Jessica Lopez, Homewood. A lot of parents, I've been in the district for many years. The buses are iffy, got worse with COVID. Alma's our transportation person. She's wonderful, okay? The lack of communication comes from Kicker, though. Because if Kicker doesn't notify Alma or the school that the bus is running late, the school has no idea. They're assuming it's on time. The 15 minutes is 15 minutes after your child's pickup time. They have that grace period. So if your child gets picked up at 7:30 after 15 minutes, that's the late time start. I found that out, calling Miss Alma. As far as the sped bus, I do agree, I do have a child on sped bus. I did meet with Mr. McAllister about the situation of being late. When it's the regular bus driver, it's never an issue. They know our kids. I asked about the sped bus being put on the district page. It's still not on there and stuff. It's just that they, we don't know if it's not put on there. But also, the school doesn't know if they're not notified. I have Alma on my phone for district, and I call her and we're like, just to let you know, the bus hasn't come. She's like, I'm going to call Kicker right now because no one's called her. So that does happen, and it's not the transportation. As far as the bids, believe it or not, there's certain bus companies that can only work certain areas, too. So that makes it harder if they're getting one bid and stuff. But the communication has to be...
And trust me, every single adult in our buildings wants those kids in the building on time. Because it's difficult for the child and the adults in the building when a child arrives late. We know that. So this is something that we all know is important.
I just want to add one more thing, just from a fiduciary standpoint. Want to be clear that everyone in this board, we just left a meeting before here with the executive search firm. And so we always looking with vendors. We, we hold them to the teeth, and we put contingencies in contracts as best we can. There are limitations because of regulations or unions and so on. But just to know, we treat every dollar of the district like it's our own. And trust me, everyone here is tight on the dollar personally. And I would just say that as far as the bus, I, you know, it doesn't sound like it's true, but there's, we battle the same thing from a teacher shortage, social services shortage. We try to do the best we can. Don't stop communicating with us. Don't think that, you know, it doesn't matter. It does matter. We appreciate representation in this room besides ourselves and administrators. So just want to thank all of you that did address the board. If you keep doing this, you'll figure out where you plug in and not. It's okay. But thank you for allowing people to speak.
I wanted to say something else, just going back to, you know, Scott always says that he doesn't know anything if people don't tell him. So, you know, bringing things to people's attention, you know, putting in email, putting it in writing, having a date stamp, I think is al, always valuable. I, my bus, my busing issue with my kids was when the bus started coming five minutes early and left without my daughter. And I had my own experience with Alma, where they had a GPS tracker on that, on that bus, and I didn't know this. But she was like, you're right, they're leaving earlier. And I think it was within the window, but it was, you know, six months in, and it was five minutes before the bus ever came. So, but you know, it, you gotta give them this information. And I guess if there's ever a question about who that person is to communicate to, you know, maybe start with the teacher, start with the principal, make a phone call to the school or district office, and sometimes just getting pointed to the right person to communicate that to. Or text your friend who's on the school board and ask her. And, you know, but, but if, if, if people don't hear the stuff, you know, I myself often feel like quite a squeaky wheel. But, but, you know, if we don't tell people things, they don't know it. So even just reaching out to Alma to let her know the buses are late, you know, because if they don't know, if nobody tells them, they might not know.
Right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming tonight.